It being on or about 7:00 PM, we have the, we are opening the Planning Board meeting of August 11th. Good evening. First agenda item is Planner's Report and Act of Subdivision.
Yes, so the main update of this week is that if you recall, there was an MBTA Communities legislation that was passed that requires communities that are in the MBTA district, which Foxborough is, even though it's just because we get an assessment. We've been an MBTA community for decades. Anyway, we are fall within the category of an MBTA community, adjacent community. The new guidelines came out this week, so they were issued on Wednesday. Unfortunately, the guidelines haven't really changed anything for Foxborough too much. You know, we didn't know what was going to happen. The guidelines are still what they are. It's expected to, the town passed by right zoning to allow multifamily, 768 units. You don't have to build them, but you have to create zoning to allow it. The sort of stick on it is that if you don't do it, you're not eligible for funding from the state. They did, in these guidelines, tighten up a bit, and they said that by January 23rd, we have to have an action plan. We don't have to pass it till the end of '24, but we'd need an action plan by the end of January 23rd, which is coming up pretty quickly. So that'll be something we want to talk to the Selectment about. You know, I know it's not something, it's frustrating. It's something that is law already passed, legislative, passed it kind of last year. Suddenly, none of us saw it coming. So we'll have to have a conversation about it, but that's, just so you know, that's coming up. I can mail it out if you want to read it. It's long.
It is long.
And you know, they, there are some ways, I could take a look and see if we can challenge anything, but a quick glance through the requirements does not seem that anything, like that will hit any of the sort of triggers that allow us to waive the requirement. So it looks like we will be dealing with that.
Well, no, but it's really going to be, you know, a decision about whether we feel that, based on the types and amounts of funding that we've received over the last 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, is enough to make us want to comply. And if we don't, we cannot.
Correct. That's absolutely an option.
So, you know, I'm sure that'll be a town meeting thing and maybe even a, maybe even a ballot thing, I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, either way, to, in order to pass this requirement, it would have to go to town meeting. So it would not be something this board or the Selectment alone would be deciding. It would be a town meeting vote.
Yep.
So, you know, and we see how difficult these housing conversations are. There's no guarantee it would pass even if we tried our mightiest, and I'm not saying we would. So we'll stay tuned for that one. Just so you know, we have a very busy September 8th agenda. We have a couple accessory apartments and 204 East Street, which we're going to continue here now. So we have a lot going on, so let us know if you have any, you know, any challenges with respect to the-
That's the next meeting, right?
That's the next meeting, is September 8th, yes. And we've had a lot of questions. There's about a 10-acre parcel near the Ahern Middle School on Chestnut Street that suddenly came up for sale. We believe it had to do with perhaps somebody who owned that large chunk of land passed away, and now it's, it went on the market. We believe it sold in minutes. So we had a lot of inquiries about it. We have not seen anything on it yet. We do believe a subdivision plan will be filed for that, just based on the fact they have access and it's a large chunk of land and-
Where, where, it's adjacent to the-
It's opposite the Ahern driveway on Chestnut Street. Am I right, Diana? Is that what you, so it's, there's like a neck, it's like a narrow sort of neck in it, and then it opens up. There are wetlands back there. But we, today, this week, we got a lot of phone calls about it because there was a backhoe out there. And we sent Scott Shippey out there to check on it, and they were just doing perk tests, which is exempt. And Jane Pierce, our Conservation Agent, checked up on it. It was all authorized. They're doing test, perk tests to check on the suitability for septic. So like I said, we haven't heard from anybody. We don't know who bought it, but it is something we will likely see.
Does that property incorporate one of the houses?
I don't think so. I think it's vacant land. That's, and you don't see that very often. That's why I was pretty shocked to see 10 acres suddenly come up on the market. You don't see that, so. But I don't know, I know very little about it because like I said, we have only heard about it through, it suddenly became available. Someone contacted us and asked us if it was developable, and we looked and we're like, whoa, we think it is. So, so stay tuned. We don't know who, what, where. I mean, we know where, we don't know who and what, but I can't imagine it won't be a subdivision and that they won't be coming in front of this board. So stay tuned for that. I have not checked on Forenet Road. My apologies. Tracy did ask me, and I forgot. So I will follow up on that tomorrow and get some more information on how things are going up there. I haven't seen or heard anything, but that doesn't mean, we'll have to check on that, for sure. Take a ride up there. And that's what I have. I'm, oh, I'm on vacation next week.
Oh, and-
Oh, by the way, I'm on vacation next week.
So I'm on-
Do we know of any activity commencing over across from Gillette on that parking?
The expanded parking, we do not know. It has not been done yet, but I don't know when it's starting.
Okay.
Oh, and with respect to the funeral home, well, we know the funeral home was taken down behind the fire station. We've been told that Doug King will take down 15 to 17 Market Street either before or on August 22nd. So should be coming up soon.
Couple days.
So, I thought 27th. Scott said 22nd, so I reserve the right to say 27th, but he seemed to think it was 22nd. But, so that is, you know, he knows the pressure's on. Scott's followed up with him a couple times. And as you know, the Fire Board of Health and building did condemn it and said it needs to be taken down as soon as possible. So we're really putting the pressure on because it is an unsafe situation.
Paige, one question on what you were just referring to. I know that they were talking about tying the house in that's on the common with a sewer line through there.
Yes.
Are they still making progress with that? Because if he's taking the house down, he's going to be probably paving that relatively quickly.
No, he's going to use, sorry, he's going to, they are, they are ready to do what they need to do. They could do it to the side, but Doug's actually using that for construction staging until he's done. So I don't think we'll have a parking lot out there. So there's a little time. But they are, Chris Gallagher is aware, and they're going to be, you know, making sure that that sewer connection can be made to Market Street.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons we were pressuring him to get that done.
Okay. Minutes?
Act of subdivision.
Well, I think you don't have that Act of subdivision, but are there any others? Act of subdivision?
Gabby went to go pick up the lot release for Stonehurst because she forgot it.
Okay. Do you know of any?
Do you want to make a motion? It's a lot release for an old project. I think it's one of these title things, so if you could make a motion to grant it, then when she comes in, you could just sign it while, you know, while we're working.
So that's a lot release at Stonehurst 3 Gilbert Lane, Lot 40.
Is that the last lot?
Don't know. I'm not even sure, sometimes these, Gabby will know better, but sometimes these are more lots that, like some really thorough title examiner is requiring it. It might be something that we didn't have an original for, and for whatever reason, they're not finding it at the registry.
I think that house is for sale, too.
Is it?
There's a house on Gilbert for sale.
So I don't think it's a new house, correct?
Okay.
And I think it's an older home that's been sold probably several times, and, you know, we sometimes find that certain title examiners are a little more thorough and they need to, but, so I'm not sure. I reserve the right. Gabby can correct us. But I don't get the sense this is a new lot, that this is, a new house, that this is a house that's being turned over again, and this is a paperwork thing. Because they need an original to record that the registry of deeds.
I make a motion to approve the lot release in Stonehurst 3 Gilbert Lane, Lot 40.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes I sent out this afternoon, everybody read that.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
The corrections, questions, et cetera? Over. What?
I just will stay from that because I didn't have a chance to look at it yet, but I trust everyone in this.
We could certainly wait. If you'd prefer to wait, you'd have a chance to look at them. That's always a good idea.
That's fine. No, go ahead.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And an abstention.
You have five minutes.
Yeah. Can, can, I have to wait five minutes.
So you're not all wondering what we're doing? We have to wait till 7:15 before we can continue that public hearing. We're taking a break after talking for 10 minutes. Do you want me to read that into the record? Because you have no glasses.
So before we start the, you know, that before we start the hearing for two Washington, we should continue, so.
We're going to stop and do a break.
That's what we were just talking about.
Okay.
You're on top of things, Paige.
You are. It's almost like you know what you're doing.
Or we think it.
Do you want the two accessory apartments on East Street? We'll continue until like 7:45?
Yeah.
Oh, 7:45?
Oh, wait, hold on. Turner Road, two accessory apart, is Turner Road empty?
Yeah.
So we got the North End Zone, Turner Road, two accessory apartment.
We haven't advertised anything yet, right? But you know, well, let's see, the accessory apartments should be the easy ones, so let's get those done.
7:15, 7:30, Turner Road.
Maybe we could do the North End Zone, like that might be 7:10 even, because that, there's no approvals, which is an update. And then, 7:15, 7:30.
Do you want, do you want less than 15 minutes?
Well, Turner, then, for the accessories?
7:15, 7:20, two accessory.
That's probably good. Seven turn, one turn is going to take a while.
Turner Road at 7:30 and East Street at 8:00.
Well, let's do 7:45, just in case.
Turner Road, is that, that's a lot?
And just so you know, for East Street, if they don't submit by next week, we're going to tell them they need to continue because we need time for the engineers to do their review.
All right. So Tracy, it's going to be continued to September 8th at 7:45.
Thank you. Thank you.
One other thing I thought of is that, as of right now, we, there's going to be a special town meeting, we believe, on November 14th. It's not totally firm, but that's because there's an election the week before and Thanksgiving the week after. That seems to be the date that's coming forward. From a zoning perspective, I believe the only thing we're going to have on there is, if you recall, last year, they, or last spring, they tried to change the word Selectment to Select Board. But none of us realized that in order to change it in the zoning, you actually have to go through the whole zoning stuff. So I, from our perspective, we're going to have to hold a public hearing to change the word, the words Board of Selectment to Select Board throughout the zoning bylaw. So that's, I think, at this point, the only thing we'll be doing for that. Yeah. I know. It couldn't go forward in May because we didn't, none of us, even dawned on us that we would have to change that.
Who proposed that?
I don't know. One of the Select, or Select Board members. Pretty much everybody in the state calls it Select Board at this point. We're one of the few that still call it that.
That's good.
We had a public hearing scheduled for 204 East Street at 7:15. We received in a letter from their attorney, this office requests that Pine Air LLC, Pine Air LLC, with respect to the above referenced matter, we write to respectfully request a continuance of the public hearing scheduled for August 11th, 2022, to September 8th, 2022. So I make a motion to continue the public hearing till September 8th at 7:45.
So moved. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So it being just past 7:15 PM, we have a continued public hearing for a special permit to Washington Street. Construction of a 224,750 square foot warehouse office building from Rock Point Fund Acquisitions LLC. So we've spent the last several meetings having a lot of conversation, mostly with butters, about issues that are concerning to that. And we really haven't had much of an opportunity as a board to talk directly to the applicant or their represent, or representatives about things that we've seen during the hearing process and also during site walks that we think we would, we have requests that we'd like you to think about and address. We're not asking you to answer us this evening because may, some of these things may be things that you haven't heard from us before, or probably haven't heard from us before. We want to put some things out on the table there for you and the applicant to consider. And then because of the busyness of, you know, this meeting that we're just talking about on the 8th, we'll probably, you know, have a need to continue to the next meeting, which is the 22nd of September. But some of the things that we, that we recognize during this process are, some of them have been talked about, things like buffering, size of the structure, how much parking is necessary, how much trailer storage is necessary, setbacks, the difference between building a larger berm and changing the type of trees for buffers. One thing we haven't really talked about is, is there any opportunity here? And can you, and will the applicant consider the idea of increasing the size of the buffer? I know what the bylaw says. I know that you guys already have, have at least 100 feet from the homes, and I guess I'd like to, you know, bring forth the idea, the concept that you increase that. And, you know, just to throw out a number, maybe you need to get 200 feet away. I don't know how realistic that is. I don't know how, how, how possible that is, but it's certainly something we think that you should give consideration to. There's been a lot of talk, you know, about the trailer, and I know that that was, we had some discussion about that. I know there's some benefit to the applicant to be able to tell potential lessees that this is a selling, you know, a, a selling thing for the site, that they can store trailers there. But I think we all know, even Ron mentioned the fact that, you know, just the idea of them dropping the trailer off of the tractor and the clanking that would happen and things of that nature. You know, I forget the number, but I seem to recall like 127 trailers out there that have been requested. So I don't have a number in my mind of what you, what you guys should reduce it to, but I certainly would like you to give that consideration and get back to us with what you think is feasible, that could pull some of that trailer lot back, you know, closer to the building, away from abutting areas, and, and hopefully create less, you know, noise pollution on the site, for lack of a better way to express that. The general parking for, for, for the building seems like it is more than is necessary, based on the figures that you, that you're, that the applicant gave back to us in the projection from CB Richard Ellis about number of employees that might be there. I think that, you know, you, there's a possibility that you guys could, you know, or the applicant, rather, could reduce the number of parking spaces that are necessary for that type of a use. And if necessary, I know it's been done in the past in other places in the town, reserving a parking area. If, you know, with, if the number of employees increases, if the, you know, the need is greater at some point in the future, you could have a reserve area and then construct that additional parking if it was necessary, as opposed to coming in with the full-blown parking that's been, that's been suggested. And I guess they, you know, the, the, the elephant in the room also is the size of the structure. I mean, I'm not saying that you aren't in compliance. I'm not suggesting that it doesn't make sense on behalf of the applicant to maximize the amount of the site as much as possible in order to get the best return on their investment. But it's a large building. It's really, we, you know, we actually did a calculation with the assessor and looked at it, and it will be maybe the fourth largest structure in the town. That, and when I say that, that includes things on the Podster Avenue that belong to the company that aren't attached, but they look at it as one, you know, large amount of square footage. You know, the, the, the building that's on Constitution that used to be an insurance building, that's now owned by Meditech, is slightly larger, but it's an office use. It's not, it's not an industrial use like this one potentially is going to be. And there's one other which escapes my, my thinking right now, but that's, that's also in this, in this range. But, you know, what are the possibilities that, you know, they could give consideration to cutting a fair amount out of that building and reducing it from 225,000 to some other size that would be more acceptable on the site? That might push things a little bit fur, again, further away from the existing residential area? You don't really seem to have, I'm not, I'm not on the Conservation Commission, so I don't know for sure, but just looking at this, and I understand from conversations at the meeting the other day, that that does not seem to be a primary environmental issue. But still, you know, if we could get things a little bit further away from the wetland, further away from the residential areas, maybe a little closer to Route 1, if that's at all possible, any of those things, I think, would be an improvement in terms of the application. Let's see, there's other, other items that just are on my list. I'm sure there are other folks on the board who have questions or, or requests that you can, that you may be able to accomplish. Yeah, that would, the, the, one of the main concerns of the, the abutting neighborhood, and it's come up here as well internally, is the air quality. What happens when you're bringing in the volume of trips, both tractor trailers and exiting, you know, you know, vehicles that are going to go wherever the goods and services that are provided in the building are, you know, how is that going to affect the air quality on the site? And also noise pollution, as I mentioned earlier, you know, what, you know, I think we need to have some kind of a study that's, that's got to be done, that can give us real answers about that. Not kind of a, you know, seat of the pants kind of thing, but hiring the right type of engineering company or ecological company, or whatever it is, in order to give us answers about that, that can address the concerns of the, of the public and also the concerns of the board. And with that, I'm going to just open it up and see if there's any, if there are other suggestions or requests of other members of the board that they, or Paige.
Well, I just got a quick question. And get it off the table right now, because it's a minor item, and I don't want to forget it. But in the first session before Conservation, Bill, you had mentioned in that presentation that half of this pitched roof would be solar ready. I don't believe that's ever been referenced before us. I couldn't find anything in the plan about it. I'm, I'm not even sure what solar ready means, but could you just kind of clarify that?
And what it means is when, it's just what it sounds like. They can, they can put up to 50% of the roof, can be fitted with solar panels. So it's designed that way. The architect sets it up that way. I could get more information on that, on the, excuse me, on the next, when we come back again.
But as of now, that's not firmly part of the build-out. It's just for use in the future if-
Yeah, it might be, but I'll get an answer.
I think the roof's designed the whole way.
If I could just clarify-
Please.
Solar in Foxborough on a building is just a building permit. So that might be something that this board wants to know, because, you know, in the past, we've made arrangements for some screening. Not that solar is, makes noise like some of the equipment up there, but, you know, if you're worried about aesthetics and whatnot.
It wasn't that, actually. I viewed it as a positive, and I believe that we had an inquiry from one of the residents early on-
Yeah.
-just about the issue of, you know, having that, that capacity or other energy alternatives for this-
Well, I just wanted to be clear that that wouldn't be something that would come back to this board. Ground mounted comes to the Planning Board, but building mounted goes to the Building Department. So if that is an issue, you know, it's something you should ask during this process to clarify if it, if you're concerned about it. I have a few things.
Yeah, please.
Okay. So just passing on, we did hear from the town manager of Walpole, and he, his first inquiry was, is there any chance the Planning Board would require the development not to use Pine Street as a turnaround? That they're working on some truck restrictions. I spoke to the planner after that, and I kind of said, you know, I don't know that that's realistic, that we wouldn't do that. He did just email me today, let me just check it, because I saw it after hours. They're just, they're not asking, let's see, he says, I understand, I don't believe our intent would be to fully prevent using Pine Street as a turnaround, but rather not have it conditioned as the turnaround, which I don't think this board was conditioning anything. He attached a study that Walpole and Sharon conducted for looking into heavy vehicle restrictions that was referenced below. A possible alternative route listed included Old Post Road in Walpole and Walpole Street in Sharon. And he's, he knows that the hearing's not going to, that it's going to be continued tonight, so I kind of said, you know, you might want to come to the meeting or put a writing, put it in writing. You know, I said, I really don't foresee this being something that the board's going to do, but, and just wanted to pass that message along, since we do tend to try to cooperate with adjacent communities to the extent we can. With respect, Kevin, to your requests, I would agree that the noise and air quality study should be required. We do, I, I'm recommending that you invoke the environmental impact study requirement that's in Section 10.6. I'm suggesting that the applicant prepare a study consistent with that section, including particular air quality and noise, and distant to the others, and then that we would use 53G funds for our peer review to review it. My understanding is our peer review doesn't do, I don't believe they do noise. I know they don't do noise. I'm not sure about air quality, so that might have to be subbed out, but they would work with us on that and have that reviewed, so it could be double-checked. So I would suggest the board go ahead and invoke that. And then there was a concern at the Conservation Commission meeting the other night, and I just wanted to publicly discuss this. There's a concern about Chase Lane drainage, and I got in touch with Chris Gallagher, and I'll just read you, there's two emails. It says, Chris wrote, "I don't think anyone over here is aware of a detention basin on Chase. Never looked for one. Looking at the plan of land, there is a drain easement behind Number 6. We've started maintaining the town-owned basins that we're aware of. In eight years, this is the first time I've heard anyone mention of a system on Chase, never mind complaints that's not being maintained." So that was the first thing. Then he followed up, and he went out to the site, and he said, "I have also now been to the site of the unmaintained detention basin behind Number 6. I spoke briefly with the property owner before I walked his property and let him know we were going to come back and clear the detention basin. He's going to work with Tree and Park to get it on the schedule." So I just wanted to let you all know that that's something that, you know, we looked at the plans, I think they're from 1999, so I mean, Chris was, has only been here eight years. Not, that's not an excuse, but as you know, MS4 and all the drainage requirements have tightened up. So now that it's going to be on the list, that's something that the DPW will be looking into and taking care of. Just a clarification on that, you know, this drainage system will remain private, not a town responsibility, so-
Which one?
One of the suggestions here. Yeah, one of the suggestions I would suggest is that if, if this were to be approved, that there would be a condition that stipulates a long-term maintenance of the system with, like, clear reporting so that it doesn't fall through the cracks, kind of as this one did. You know, we'll have to figure out how that is, whether it's, I don't know the best way. We'll look at, for, you know, advice on how to make sure that that gets done. So that's just a, on that. Consistent with what you mentioned, Kevin, I've suggested that the applicant consider utilizing the provisions of Section 6.16, which would allow them to reduce the number of parking spaces. Because here's the, they can't, you mentioned about cutting back, they can't do it without relief. 195 spaces are required under zoning, so they have to build those. They're showing 197, so two extra. But if they were to file for a special permit, which they could do, you know, and then it could run concurrent with the rest of it, they could reduce the parking by up to 48 spaces, which is 25%. So, you know, while I acknowledge that- I think it brings it to 147, and they're estimating, although they have no idea, obviously, employees, but 77 employees, so there's a little buffer there. So that's something that just might want to be considered. I don't know, I, I know, Bill, I emailed you about that, I don't know if you had a chance to discuss or consider that. Do you have any comment on that? Is that a good thing, a bad thing? Because it seems to make sense if it...
So Marcy's away this week, so we briefed her on it, and so what we're waiting for is to come up with, you know, we want to look at everything as a package.
Okay.
And once we, you know, we have a handle on what it is you're asking us to do, then we'll take a look at all of that, and we'll look at all options, all the things you're asking us.
Okay. So that's, that's an option. The other thing is I've gotten this very crash course.
Before you go on from the parking issue, so, yeah, zoning's, you know, 195 spaces required under zoning unless, you know, there's an applicant applying for relief, but what about the truck parking? Is that completely discretionary?
Yeah.
Where does that number come from?
That's a good question.
That's their, that's their number.
And what number is that at?
121, I believe.
How many truck spots, Bill?
He put me on his spot.
I think it's 121.
Sorry.
I thought it was 127, but same difference.
It's over 100.
Okay.
Yeah, that is not something that's stipulated by zoning, so...
So it's something that they could reduce the size of?
These are all based on this size building, too.
Correct.
The building was smaller.
Right, so, right, good point.
And I would suggest, I mean, I, in my notes, I, when we were talking about it previously, I mean, I would want to, if this were ever to be approved, I'd want to make sure that that, that those spaces aren't another business opportunity, and that, like, you end up with three, three lessees, and then you have a whole nother trailer rental operation on that. I mean, I just think that's, you know, something that the town isn't necessarily looking to go into. And I don't know that they'd be proposing that, but just as it gets sold and someone's, you know, it's always probably, I don't know enough about trailers, but I just would hate to see that as another whole enterprise where you have constant storage of trailers out there, because, you know, someone can make money doing that. So I just suggest that that might not be...
There was, there was for a long, long time, a use like that on Route 1, Mr. Sage's lot. It was, it was land, you know, that was just bacon, and, you know, for many, many years it was, and eventually that went away and he recontinued the idea of doing parking again. So you're right, it is a viable thing that someone could try to use as a business.
So I would suggest it be restricted, but I don't know, that's, I don't know that they've asked for it, and I don't know, you know, that's, we're not to that discussion yet, but that was something I had in my notes. Then I've been taking a crash course on warehouses, and I provided you some information on here about the ITE, the Institute of Transportation, and the five different types of warehouses. In fact, there was a really interesting article about how, you know, warehouses in the old days were just sort of warehouses, you had a big truck come, deliver it, but now with the, the supply chain and the way things work and all the different levels, there are all sorts of categories. So the little table on, on this memo shows the variety of types of warehouses, from warehousing, which is category 150, which estimates like .9, .19 trips per unit per thousand square feet versus a mini warehouse, and this one is 156, which is at .64. And then the, let's see, a fulfillment was somewhere else, and that was seven times higher. So I guess the point being is when the, if the board got to a decision, we would probably want to be specific to ensure that whatever traffic data was used, that any, there would be conditions in there that this wouldn't go over and above that. And perhaps even, once tenants are identified, make sure those are firmed up, you know, because the numbers were, the code, the code used was 156, and we just want to make sure that whatever the end user, again, if approved, would be within those parameters. Otherwise, we'd have unexpected traffic. So that's down the road, but I, you know, I've been doing a lot of reading about sort of the whole new world of warehousing, and it's like, basically not your grandpa's warehouse anymore, you know, and we all know that intuitively, but it's been interesting to read the literature out there about the variations. Jeff, I think you've been doing some research, do you have any?
Right, right. Well, I think that speaks...
Sorry, are you in there?
I, I haven't even started talking yet.
Oh, sorry.
I think that speaks to the issue of the lack of, and this sounds not the way intended, but the lack of transparency or the inability to get a grasp on likely tenants. I'm actually, I really don't care about identity of prospective tenants. What I'm more interested in, and I think the board probably is, is the nature of operations that are likely to be conducted on the site. And as Paige was just referencing, you know, depending on tenant and their particular niche and what is going to be going on there, within, under the umbrella of warehousing and distribution operations, there can be a wide range of actual activities, there can be a wide range of vehicle trips in and out, there can be, I guess the point is, is that it, it will be difficult for the board to come up with reasonable conditions in a blanket-type of approach, without a more specific understanding of what precise business will be conducted on that site, how it will be conducted. Will it be more conventional warehousing? Will it be tilted more towards fulfillment operations and direct-to-consumer activity? Will it be some combination of the two, or, you know, something else that I haven't really even thought of? And I think that, from what we understand, different types of businesses specialize in those different types of specific activities. So that's, you know, without, without really having a hard handle on that, I think that's kind of problematic.
And I also think that, that one thing I didn't bring up earlier, which was the request for 24/7 operations, I mean, I know we've had some short discussions about that here before, but I think clearly that's got to be, you know, substantially reduced, you know, you know, both from the potential pollution issue, the noise issue, and just the impact on the neighborhood.
I agree.
You know, we would, I, I don't have a number at the top of my head right now, but I certainly think, you know, more similar to what we saw in other trucking areas in the town. I mean, I know there was a comment that, you know, when, when there was restrictions put on, you know, the truck terminal, that it created parking issues on Route 1 and other things like that. I know that Ron brought up the fact that, you know, we're not saying we're going to restrict the idea that they can't enter your property, but we're saying no unloading, no disconnecting of tractors and trailers, no, you know, banging and clanging at all times of day and night. There would have to be, you know, a more restrictive timeframe, whether it's the, whether it was what it was over there, which was like 7:00 to 7:00 or whatever it was, or 7:00 to 10:00, or, you know, but something that's got to be much more in line with the ability to lessen the impact as much as possible in the existing neighborhood. I mean, it's, this, this, this project, in order for it to have, you know, a hope of success, is going to have to, I think, do its best job to be sensitive to, you know, the fact that although these residents moved into a neighborhood that abuts that use, and although, you know, some of those residents would like this thing to be absolutely gone away, that in the event that it has an opportunity to even be considered for passage, these, these types of items are going to have to be reduced, I mean, not reduced, you know, addressed. And so that really, that the applicant could show its, its best-faith effort in trying to make it reasonable so that they can live within their ability to run a business, make a profit, and be successful without incurring, for lack of a better word, you know, some type of damage to the neighborhoods, you know, that are, that are direct to butters, and even ones that aren't specifically direct. You know, I know, we heard a lot about Beach Street and traffic, et cetera, well, it's an issue. So I know that, that Mr. Buckley earlier, in previous hearings, had talked about the idea that they would consider writing up some kind of thing that the town could present to the DEP regarding, not, not the DEP, to the, to, you know, on traffic, so we could restrict the amount of traffic on Beach Street, possibly on North Street, and, and maybe any other types of traffic calming measures that we might put in either of those locations in order to discourage the use of any larger vehicles, even though we're going to put signage up, and we've already, there's already been written ideas sent off to Mr. Gallagher, not just to leave it on Beach Street, but to consider Mechanic Street and other areas, so that we prevent them from even thinking about making a turn onto Beach. So I think these other issues really need to be, you know, addressed more fully in order to get, do consideration.
Yeah, someone had that good idea, and we did pass that on to Chris, of, you know, even now, putting up signs earlier, so that folks aren't always already on, you know, about to go onto Beach Street or on North Street, so that it's, it's back, you know, at the entrances, you know, back to Mechanic and where they can say, oh, wait, you know, no through-truck traffic or whatnot. So they, they have an awareness, because we don't know, they might not be aware until they're already there, that they're not supposed to be there. So it's trying to, you know, think intuitively now in advance, so...
And a good example of that, even though it's only used on a temporary basis, is the way the stadium addresses this stuff during games.
Just driving.
You know, they have tons of signs all along Mechanic Street, all along Chestnut Street, you know, to make sure that people understand, they cannot make a turn in a certain place, they cannot get access unless they're a resident, whatever those things might be.
Obviously, those are temporary signs.
They are, they are temporary, and I'm not saying we need 100 signs.
Right.
But we need things that are more proactive like that.
Or more prominent.
Or more prominent, it's a good word.
Yeah. So then my only last thing is I just, regarding impacts to the environment, the findings that were submitted talked about stormwater, but there was nothing about noise and air quality, so that gets back to that, you know, major issue. And then the, the other criteria is being socially and economically desirable. The response is heavy on economics, we'd want to see more on sort of the social, the, you know, the impact on the community type thing, not just economics. And then satisfying existing need, it talks again about financial viability, so, and one of the, you know, we do have to look at, you know, the benefits and the detriments, and there was a submission, but I think that could be a little stronger as to, like, what is the benefit to the community, really, as a whole, you know? And we know, we did look into the, the tax revenue, and it seems, and I don't know if you want to clarify this, but it, it seemed, we checked the estimate you provided of 600-plus thousand, that's based on, I believe, a $40 million construction cost. The assessor did agree that for the first year, that would be valid, because that's the used construction costs in year one. It seems that after that, it would go to income-based, and I don't know a whole lot about that, but Kevin and I, you know, took a look at, like, the Panis Road and did some extrapolations, and, you know, it was much lower than 600,000, so I think we'd want to have, we don't want to only talk about financials, but I do want to make sure that that's 600,000, you know, that's not necessarily, I don't believe, going to be every year that you'd see that kind of thing. So that's, you know, that goes to, to, as well, to the, the benefits, but, you know, we really do need to look as a whole as to how does it benefit Foxborough, not just financially, but otherwise.
Right, because we've got this, we, we've got the six criteria. Addressing community needs, traffic safety, utilities, which I think is probably the only one that there's no issue on the utilities front. Neighborhood and character, impact on natural resources, which is the noise and air quality, and then, to your point, the economic and the fiscal. And even if you throw the jobs in on that, I mean, they're saying there's only 70 employees, I mean, most of the folks going in and out of there are going to be truckers that aren't necessarily from here. So it's not like they're going to become a huge employer all of a sudden within Foxborough. And it would be the biggest, back to Kevin's point on the side, the biggest warehouse in, I think this, in our town, definitely, and one of the biggest in the area if it were to go through. And to not see a lot of those benefits.
That's all I have.
So this thing you want us to invoke, you know, do we need to make a motion to do that?
Yes, you could take a motion to require the EIS under Section 10.6.
It's reasonable. Feel free.
I make a motion to require...
An EIS.
An EIS.
Under 10.6.
Under 10.6.
With air quality and noise.
With air quality and noise.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that might take a little time, I mean, that's a challenge, we know, from, you know, getting...
Backlog.
Backlog, but, you know, we'll work, the applicant, I know, will work diligently on their end, and then we'll work diligently on our end to get the reduce, the review done. We don't yet know what that's going to take for time-wise, but, you know, obviously it's important, so we will work on that.
I would just make a point, Tracy, to what you had mentioned in the list...
Yeah.
...of criteria, and you specifically referenced utilities, and you said, ah, probably the only one that's not an issue, but it is. And the reason it is, is because at some point in deliberations, I think you have to, it's, it would be irresponsible not just to judge this, but to judge what could go there.
Because of the sewer?
If this was it. Yes. And in terms of water use, in terms, I don't care about the sewer, because that's MWRA.
So is the water.
So is the water.
Oh, is it the water as well?
It's, yeah, it's not, as much, and that's some of the reason that I said, it's not much of an issue, because that doesn't impact our town. We should still take it into consideration for our budding towns, because we're friendly and nice like that, but, yeah.
But I think when we get to the point where we're doing those types of deliberations, we need to do that kind of balance.
I agree with you. I agree. So do we need to continue this until we get our studies?
At least responses and studies, at least to the 22nd.
Yeah, we'll do the 22nd, and then it might not be wrapped up by then, it depends on how quickly the EIS moves, but certainly we could do a check-in, we could hear from the applicants on their responses to the Kevin, the request Kevins have made and...
And the ones you made.
Yeah. And touch base and see where we are at that point.
Okay.
What time?
So I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing until September 22nd at 7:15?
Before we vote on that, I'd just be interested to know if we had any feedback or, you know, response from the applicant's representatives, or is it just...
They have to wait till they...
Just do a data dump here and pass all this along?
I mean, I...
I don't think you're prepared to respond.
No, I think you're pretty clear, and any, and when we come, you know, certainly not going to be done in a month. So, you know, if we have any issues or questions, we'll deal with your professional staff, and if there's things that need to be decided by the, the board, we'll be back on the 22nd, and we'll, we'll talk about it then.
Okay.
Okay. So make a motion to continue the public hearing until the 22nd at 7:15 of September, 22nd of September at 7:15?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.